I will call council to order at 7:00 on June 21st, 2022. Let's stand for the pledge. Kevin, I'll have you lead.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
A roll call.
All right, McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here. Okay, before you, you have the minutes of June 7th, 2022, the regular council meeting. Do I have a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
First by Dan, second by Brenton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, before you, also, we have the May 3rd, 2020, 2022 amended regular council minutes. If there's no-
Do you want to know what-
I was getting, yeah, can I ask what was amended?
Yes. So Vicki had sent in a correction. So the law director, when he called the executive session, I was asking for it, I worded it wrong.
Okay.
So I worded it backwards. So she just gave me the correct-
So that last paragraph is the only thing?
Yeah. Wherever, yeah, Brian had spoken, that is the corrected area.
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, I have a- Second. Okay, first and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, we have granted permission for visitors to speak. First one, I will turn over to Kevin Meyer.
Yes, sir. I thank you very much. I would like to ask my friend Erica Partesari to approach the podium, and the mayor will meet her up there, and he's got a proclamation for her.
You want to introduce yourself and tell me who you do?
Yes, my name is Erica Partesari, and I'm with the Alzheimer's Association. So I manage the Walk-in Alzheimer's in Mansfield, also in Tipton and Sandusky. And I had the pleasure of getting to know Kevin the last couple of months, and he, we talked about this proclamation, and he invited me to come to the meet tonight.
How did you work for the Alzheimer's Association?
I've been with the Association four years now.
Wonderful. And lots of stats, they're not very pleasant.
No, no.
So I know Kevin's family's been touched, many of our families have been touched by dementia and Alzheimer's too, so. And some of the stats that are coming are pretty intimidating too, so thank you for doing all you can do. We're waiting for medicines to come down the line, and I know, hearing you came to Rotary-
Yes.
And spoke about it, and there were some hopeful things about some medicine too.
True. There's some things in the pipeline, but it's just a crippling disease with very limited treatment and no cure.
And it's also hard on the caregivers.
Extremely.
Why is that?
Because the disease can go on for so long, and just the repetitiveness of caring for somebody with Alzheimer's, you know, you're saying the same things over and over, and you just, it's just can be very lonely and daunting. And again, this disease can go on for 10 years. It's just emotionally taxing as well as financially.
So when you're nursing and helping people with the Alzheimer's, you're also helping the families too, right?
Yes, yes.
So it's quite a burden, so.
Yes.
Well, we're happy to proclaim in the city of Bucyrus, June to be Alzheimer's and brain aware where this month. There's a lot of nice stats on here. I'm not going to read them all.
Yeah.
But there's over 220,000 Ohioans alone that are living with Alzheimer's disease. It's a staggering statistics, including other dementias too. And there's another large group, larger group that are even undiagnosed, so I expect even more of that.
Correct.
The medical costs are into billions, and it's just, so it's an incredible, difficult thing. So the Alzheimer's Association is a very valuable organization to all of us, and we thank you for all that you do and for representing the Alzheimer's Association. Anything that we get, I know Rotary has some things that we have been trying to help out with with the Care Walk, which we're planning in September.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that's it. Do you want to talk a little bit about October?
Sure. Yeah, I wasn't sure how much I could say. Yes.
Do you have a minute for it?
So we're having the Walk-in Alzheimer's, which is September 17th, at the OSU North Central State College campus. And it encompasses residents from Crawford, Richland, Ashland, and Knox County. So we raise funds to, for research, for care and support, and also for advocacy. This disease affects over 6 million people, and again, it's just extremely costly. Our health systems aren't prepared for this onslaught of people being diagnosed with this disease. Age is the number one risk factor, and as we see the baby boomers aging, this is why we're seeing it more prevalent.
And you have a website too?
Yes, ALZ.org.
And you can sign up for the walk at that same website?
ALZ.org/walk.
Okay. We got that all.
I know.
Okay, so I'll give you the proclamation. We got to get a picture, Jeff? Okay, so let's get a picture, and then-
You're wearing a lot of hair.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Lieutenant. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Carolyn Chirman, 1065 East Bill Avenue. I think my question would be for the mayor. Can you tell us anything about the new business coming in up by TSC?
A new business coming in?
Where the house was purchased.
The Jane Moses house was-
No, the plans haven't even been submitted yet, so.
So it's not going to be a gas station for semi trucks?
I, if there's been no plans to even submit, I couldn't tell you what it's going to be or what's not.
Well, that's what everybody's saying on Facebook.
Must be correct. It's on Facebook.
Oh, I know. A lot of people tell truth. You're on there, I imagine.
Yeah, I know, I agree.
Okay, so let me ask the future question. It's obvious that a business is going in there because Joe Graham told me, because Jane was his aunt. So.
It's not obvious to us.
But my question is, there will be a future business going there?
We don't know. Somebody bought the property, and we have, we've gotten nothing through zoning, we've got no plans submitted, it's good to know.
So you know nothing about the new business?
I know that the business, I know that it's sold to somebody, it's a business. I don't know what the final plans are going to be, so.
So have you heard anything about what it is, since you know it is a business?
That's all I can tell you.
Well, they're saying a truck stop for trucks with a strip mall.
I don't think there's enough room for a truck stop, just looking at it, truck stops-
Well, there's five acres there.
I'm sure there's a strip mall. I don't, I don't know.
I do, I knew Jane. So if a new business comes in there, what does that do to the water retention for the people across the street?
Well, anything, just like Aldi, they have to, you know, they have to have underground storage for that, for the water, just like Aldi has.
But that didn't help the people that have been flooded?
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that are going on there. It's actually made a lot better, we cleaned some things out, and found some blockages there. So we have made substantial improvements up there.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know.
All right, great.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Mike Castor, 130 Brentwood. Most of you gentlemen have met me and so on, ladies. Quick question, nothing of a complaint, and I don't want to be taken back. I was at one of the committee meetings the other night, and Mr. Spiegel brought up something that just kind of caught my ear. It was a discussion about the garbage trucks and the budget and possibly raising it. And the one question he asked, which kind of caught my ear, was asking, I think it was the service director, how the budget was with that, where they were at, and he was saying they'd already taken money out of another fund. Having been there with the county and done this, we went through these budget crunches and gas price raises before. As the city or the council sit down, and Mr. Mayor actually took your budget, which was originally probably done last year at the prices and rates end, we're now at the end of June, and reworked your budget to see exactly where you're at and where your shortfalls are going to be and when they're going to hit you, whether it be June 30th, September 1st. I seriously doubt your budget you did last year is going to run you to December 31st. I guess I'm just bringing this up because it caught my ear and the different meetings I've been at. I have yet to hear too much comment about this year's budget, gasoline, diesel, and so on my cap. If it hasn't been discussed, hasn't been reworked through the auditor, I'm suggesting it's about time. We're closing on June 31st, and like I say, having been done, done there, done that, been there, it's probably about time.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan had it.
Yeah, Finance Chair, so every month we get, we get a report comparing it to last month, we get a report comparing it to several years back. We see the revenues that are coming in, so we're not just, every year we make, and the budget, if you ever listen to the, to the legislation, every time we say, I don't know what it is this year, but it's usually like 51 or something, ordinance 51, we're amending it, that's the budget. So every, almost every meeting, we're amending the budget, one way or another, we're moving money around. So, yeah, we're not looking at this blindly, we're looking at every month, every meeting. So, yeah, we definitely know, and yeah, we're short right now a little bit, so.
You're probably, I'm sure you're short a little bit, and I might be just more a little bit.
But we've also, some of the projects, we've, we've had to, right off the bat, we had to find more money for them. I think there was one we dropped because we weren't, like I say, it's a, it's a moving, fluid thing every, every two weeks.
But your, but your budget was for this year, if it's like every other government agency-
Right.
Was put in place at the end of probably two, or 2021-
But it's not, it's not.
Based for 2022.
I mean, it's fixed, but that's what we vote on every, every two weeks. We vote, we're amending it, we're changing it, we're moving this money here, that money there, and, and we keep a really close eye on it, so.
So your anticipation, like I say, this is not a complaint, it was just an observation. Am I to presume from your comment though, having looked at it, you're satisfied that you have enough money in the budget for 2022 to run to the end of 2022?
We are going to make it to 2023 with whatever money we bring in, and if we have to cut something out, we cut something out, you know?
Well, and that's what, that's what I know.
That's why I say, it's fluid. If we get down to, to, and every, at the end of every year, Joyce says, I need money in this, I need money in that, or she says, I'm going to, we're going to roll this over to next year, we're going to roll that over to next year. It's very fluid, it's very-
Yeah, and observations is just what I call, it came up when the garbage structure talked about.
And that's one place we've-
You have garbage droughts.
We've doubled around some money, we figured we didn't need a truck for, we could put that off a couple of years, and we used it for-
But on the other hand, you also have fire department and police cruisers, which have to patrol 24 hours a day.
Right.
And those are the things on the back of my mind, and I know, having sat through several committee meetings in up here, and I know I don't know everything you guys are discussing because I've got life to live too, but it was just something I thought, at the council meeting, I thought maybe best to just mention it here as a group rather than try to hit every committee meeting, and just, I guess in a nice way, ask, where does the city of Bucyrus stand with the budget this year, and are there, you know, are there cuts talked about having to be made? We made it through, didn't make any personnel cuts the time we went through it, when the OPEC thing hit and the gas prices dipped their little trick back in, I think, the eighties. So that was, that was my thing, and I think as the citizens of Bucyrus, that's going to be something that is also being talked about. Are we going to have our police protection? Are we going to have gas for the cruisers? Another thing, I got this week, or past, you know, past week, 10 days, besides the price of gasoline going up, the gentleman I know owns a garage has already been told by his suppliers, the price of motor oil is going up 40 cents a quart this month, and the anticipation is there will be another 80 cents a quart added next month. So we know this isn't going to end by the end of this year, and probably well into 2023. Just an observation, wanted to just say something as a citizen, say, where are we at, and how's our city doing, and how are we going to come out in the end, or what are we going to have come Thanksgiving? All right?
We keep an eye on it. We try our best to keep an eye on it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask another question? This concerns the pool. Can somebody tell me, who is in charge of opening and closing the pool?
The service director is.
Don't you think that the parents would know if it was too cold or not for their child to swim? So far, there's been two days, just recently here, that the pool's been closed.
We were closed, was it Saturday? We're in the 60s on Saturday.
The policy is set at 70 degrees.
It's, yeah, it's going to be-
And I think it was 72 or 73.
But at the time before opening, it was 68 degrees.
68 degrees.
There's been two times since the pool has officially been opened that the pool was called closed because of weather.
There's some storms, I know one other day we-
There wasn't storming that day.
I think Saturday, the temperatures were 68, and-
But the water, no, that's not what the people are saying, they're upset that-
No, I checked it before, I checked the weather before I even posted it on-
Well, you know, I'm sure the people do too, that take their children there.
By the way, that's just-
And they're all complaining, why was the pool closed?
We don't open it when it's 68 degrees.
But it was 73 degrees by the weather.
At 3:00 in the afternoon it was, but anyway, we-
This was earlier in the morning, Jeff.
No, it wasn't, you're wrong.
I know, I'm always wrong, but I'm saying, the people are complaining that the pool has been closed twice since it's been open.
The only reason it would've been closed, like we said before, is because the weather wasn't conducive to swimming or safe.
But don't you think that the parents have the right to choose?
Or number two, if we were short of lifeguards, and that would be, and that may have happened-
So that's the real reason, is you were short on lifeguards, that you shut the pool.
Mr. President, I'm done.
I know, I know you get like that, Jeff, when you get cornered. You have no answer because you shut the pool, because you did not have a lifeguard.
It was temperature.
No, it wasn't.
Carolyn, please.
Don't, Carolyn, me, people's watching this, they see you guys. You're making yourself look like fools.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? If not, we will proceed with communications and petitions.
We have a letter from Mayor Reeser. It says, Dear Jenny, the Tax Incentive Review Council will meet on Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, and the city of Bucyrus has two representatives, the mayor and some of, someone appointed by the mayor. Council will need to concur with my appointment, then a letter from Council will need to be sent to Crawford County Attorney, Robin Cheats, verifying my appointment. I have appointed Doug Fote to the Tax Incentive Review Council for the term of January 1st, 2023, to 3rd December 1st, 2023. Thank you for your help in this matter.
Okay.
Just circling back to-
Economic Development.
Mr. President. Did we decide anything on that, whether you wanted to go forward with Mr. Fote or have me and Mr. Fote on there as opposed to you, or?
If you would be willing to be on it, I would be happy to appoint you.
We had just talked at the last-
I know, we talked briefly about it.
Right, right.
We haven't talked since then.
No, we haven't, and I was just unsure if you had come to terms with what you wanted to do with that. Either way, it's fine with me, I don't mind.
So Mr. Potter and Mr. Fote? I'd love to have you on that, as chairman of Economic Development.
Absolutely.
I'd like to move that we accept the mayor's recommendation of Mr. Potter and Mr. Fote to the TIRC council and ask the council clerk to send notification to the TIRC of said decision.
With both of them on it?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And I'm sorry, who was the first and second? I apologize.
Kevin and-
Myers and Wireball.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. The next letter is from the Bucyrus Planning Commission Chairman. It says, Dear Madam President, the Bucyrus Planning Commission met on Monday, June 20th, 2022, and voted favorably to the following reinstatement of non-conforming use. Dr. Chan Haldeman, owner of 1050 South Sandusky Avenue, has asked that the property be permitted to be used as a chiropractic office. Please place this subject into the plating committee for consideration, and if possible, add it to the first available public hearing. Additionally, we ask to expedite the economic development and vitality of the neighborhood in the city of Bucyrus. We ask the legis, that's a mistake, we ask that the legislation be drafted as an emergency for this subject matter. Sincerely, Mayor Jeff.
I'd like to move to send this to the plating committee.
Hold on a second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Kevin and Terry.
Oh, thank you.
We have, if we don't have any other communications and petitions, okay, standing committee reports. As of right now, the only thing I have for plating is that we need to bring up our public hearing that we scheduled, we have the draft legislation brought back up and made, make a motion on the legislation so we can proceed with the hearing and reset the hearing date.
That would still be an open project that we can take care of Thursday, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll do that, and we'll schedule it with-
Right.
Dr. Haldeman's, one we just put into plating.
Okay. Public lands and buildings. Dan.
Oh, oh, that's right.
No report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report at this time.
Economic development?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Service, and we'll have someone else speak for Terry.
No report.
Okay. And traffic commission, Mr. Mayor.
We have no report.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for traffic commission? If not, I need a motion to accept committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Kevin and Brenton, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, report of city officers.
Thank you, Mr. Pro temp. Back to traffic real quickly. Last, there was a gentleman here from Tim Horton's area. Just want to let you know that I reached out to the owners that night, and they got back with me the next day. There was a miscommunication between the new landscape folks, maintenance, so it's been a moan, and it's looking really good since then, so maybe you've noticed. Well, summer events are continuing. Cruising with the cops was very successful. Over 500 cars registered. Weather was beautiful. Thank you to all the volunteers, and especially to FOP for hosting this popular event. Hope it continues well into the future. The Tommy Tournament at Little League was a big deal again this year. Over 40, I think almost, I think 49 teams was the total, actually, from all over Ohio, and I think there was some even from out of state. Lots of good comments were given about our facilities out there, and it's a beautiful place to play ball. Thanks to all the folks, the volunteers that are, that are working so hard. These are great things. All of you probably played Little League baseball, or softball, or soccer, and had good memories, and it's all thanks to good volunteers. Thanks to Kiwanis for the chicken dinner last week. It was brutally hot that day, but people came out to support it. I know they sold out, so, and they're very, as you know, they're working towards raising money for the Splash Park. It's going to be going out to bid here fairly soon. John was there for the first Shein's Art Park movie, which was very well attended, Thank you for doing that, John. Of course, Rob and Trish did a great job on that, we thank them for that. We've got four more movies on the schedule. Are, are we going to put that on the website?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, yes, thank you. I know we have one July 1st, I believe is the next one, on first-
Elaborate.
First Friday is elaborate, right? Okay, first Friday coming up.
First Friday is July.
It's a week from Friday, yeah. The Dora event will be coming on that same day, the very first one. We had a meeting last week at the Elks. Lots of good comments were made. Aaron and Jesse from Chamber hosted that, and I think, I think we're well on our way. When they first, Aaron made a comment, Aaron Stein, that when we first started this process, we were the 30th Dora application, and now we were, now we are the 103rd. So it's, it's doing well, and it hasn't been an issue. So thanks to everybody who's involved. On Friday, if you're not busy between 11:00 and 2:00, please come down to the Art Park. That's the annual South of the Square Block Rally, and the beneficiary this year is the backpack program. Very worthwhile program, so come and have something to eat. I know there'll be entertainment too, and, you know, just come on down, you're going to have fun. And mayor's conference was, was recently held in Columbus after a two-year hiatus due to COVID. There were 93 mayors from around the state. Now, that sounds like a lot, but there's over 900 mayors in the state of Ohio, so. But a nice mix of our size town and a little bigger, and smaller too. Learned a lot, and I sent everyone a kind of an update of what went, some of the topics that were discussed. Governor was there, he gave a good talk on the wrap-up luncheon, had a lot of good things to say, and there's more grant money coming down the pike for us, so we're going to be ready for that, so.
All right.
It's always good to learn a lot about, from other mayors, and I would encourage you, the OML, Ohio Municipal League Conference is coming up in October. Now typically, you don't see council members at that, but I would encourage you to maybe come down a day, if you could. The dates, I can post it, give the dates to you too, so just consider it, consider it. It's always good to get out and just get out of town and talk to other people, see what's, it's amazing what, what you can learn, so.
That'd be good.
Thank you, that's all for me, Mr. President.
All right. And I have any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, I got it. When did we ever find out about these dumpsters?
They're up again. I hate to pick on Little Caesars, but it's been out there like six months in the front parking lot.
Oh my, oh yeah, so, I don't know.
And that's, that's just the noticeable one, I mean, so.
I don't know, I don't think it's been brought to our attention.
I think I did, back in-
Did Mike?
I think I've got the emails I can show you, but-
Not about Little Caesars, you haven't. We talked about, we talked about-
I think I had a list, I think I- I think I had a list. I think I sent you a list.
Pictures too, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so the Little Caesars is out in the front, but it was, it wasn't moved?
It's been there for six months.
No, it's in the same spot.
In the same spot there?
And they bought some traffic cones back in where their dumpster is supposed to be. I don't know if the concrete had failed and they haven't fixed it yet. There's something going on.
I know we talked about the ones behind Crazy Fox and.
Yeah.
Those were on our property. This one's on their private property, but it's not, the zoning says it needs to be in a screened area and it's not.
And they actually have a screened area, but they don't.
Okay. Well, I did talk to some business owners.
I did see them a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Redoing all that concrete where their trash receptacle was supposed to be.
Okay. We'll follow through on that one. You're gonna, you're gonna have some issues with some of the merchants if you're gonna ask them to build up screened. So, I can tell you that. I've talked to some of those.
Should we change the law?
Well, you either have that or I'll let you kind of reach out to them and see what they say, so.
Yeah, I guess somebody's gotta do it.
Well, I've done it and I can tell you, you're not gonna like what you hear, but, because I didn't like, you know, I know people aren't gonna wanna do that, so, especially independent owners.
There's things I don't wanna do either, but you have to do it because it's called the law. Okay?
I understand, but now you've got one thing, if it's in an alley versus visible from the main street, you know, maybe the law needs to be changed to, you guys can look at that, whatever you decide. If you wanna change the law, how you wanna enforce it's fine, so that would be up to you.
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
If I may, this is more, again, informational question. Haven't heard too much discussion about it. Two weeks, plus than two weeks, we'll have July 4th here, Mayor. The state has changed their rules and laws on fireworks within the state. Has the city of Busiris done anything locally that the citizens should know about? Are we going to be working under state ordinance or state code?
Yeah, we'll be, from my point of view, we'll be calling the state if council wants to do something different, that'll be up to them.
Yeah. I just haven't heard too much discussion about it other than what you hear in the news. And some cities, I know, have taken it upon themselves to make local city ordinances that restricted the fireworks. Had not heard anything besides, but I thought, as a citizen and for the citizens of the city, so we're proceeding.
They're all good questions.
While the state allows is what we're gonna do then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All, all good questions, but, you know, we're pretty close to July 4th now and legislation would be.
Would be pretty hard.
It would be difficult, so.
But, no, I'm not, I'm not in favor. Don't misunderstand my question. I'm not in favor of the city doing any legislation against it. I'm actually pro fireworks. I like, as long as they're done safely and properly. But just for informational purposes, the only reason I ask if there'd been any discussion or if sometimes a new city ordinance may slide through to control something and the general public doesn't pick it up.
Some cities, you know, put new ordinances in.
And just, and just for informational purposes, no, I'm not setting off fireworks in my front yard this year, so, all right.
What's your address?
We'll be over in a minute.
Well, what I've been told, the price of fireworks, all right, we're gonna do them, somebody's gonna share the cost.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Service Safety Director.
Speedwell, speaking of July 4th, that's a nice segue. We will be, city offices will be closed July 4th, so have you trash out Tuesday early. Compost site is now open every day until 8:00 PM to help folks bring out the brush that might have blown through during the storm. Lifeguards are an issue locally, nationally, and wherever you go. And we're still looking for lifeguards for the city pool. Please get an application on the city website or the mayor's office. If you need to be certified, please call the Safety Service Director's office and ask for Kelly. Update on the pool, there is, as a discussion went here a little bit ago, it must be 70 degrees to open the pool. And also with lifeguards, lifeguard has to be responsible for 25 people. So if, if we have been limited, if we have three lifeguards, we only allow 75 people in the pool. So, those are the, those are the things we live by. If you have, put tree branches at the curb. I think we've got that on our website there. Bring them out to the curb and our crews have worked very hard. And I know all the local businesses are working hard, Oberlanders and Cudubup, all of them are working very hard out there. We had a meeting for Nevada Waterline today, still moving forward, and the plans are at the EPA right now. We're waiting on just a couple easements and we should be ready to go. R.A. Boris, a longtime contractor in the city, will be starting the Woodlawn Waterline Project the week of June 27. And I don't know what the completion date is on that, but I can get that answer if anybody needs to know. Nature Works grant from the state, for some reason, was cut from $3 million to $1,100,000 for Crawford County. And we're not quite sure why. So, we had applied for a grant for the Splash Pad at Lyons Park. And obviously, it's not gonna fit into that budget, so that, we're not giving up. We will be looking for other grants and other things the state's doing. So, we've already got a few other things in the works. As I already mentioned, Little League, we have 49 teams. Jeff says thanks to all the people, the volunteers, it's very good publicity for the city of Busiris. And the cop show, Cruising with the Cops. Hats off to them, from Jeff to the FOP and the volunteers too. Question, we had questions about the fireworks. It's going to be back at the fairgrounds this year. And it's going to be on Sunday, July 3rd at dusk as usual. And we met with commissioners last week and then again today about waterline expansion. And all three projects that are on the board are moving forward. And that's Jeff's report.
Anybody have questions for Jeff or the Service Safety Director? Go ahead, Terry.
Is the city doing any, about lawn grass and yards? There's a, there's a place on Highland Street on the first block of it as you're going south. The grass has gotta be this high on the yard.
It's, I'm sure it's on the, so that.
Oh, that's on that corner, yeah.
We have, we have a property maintenance department. Gordon Grove does that and we have a, a green card that we have in the office. You can, it's anonymous, you can fill out the address, you can see what's wrong with it. We just need the address. What is it?
I don't know. I think it's an empty lot, I believe.
And, and what happens is, you know, they get a, they get a letter. Okay, clean, mow your lawn, clamp your trash, whatever's out there. And then we have to wait so many days by law. And then, then they can go to court and then the judge may give them another 60 days, you know. It's, it's kind of, it's. And then we eventually, if it's on our list, we will mow it and then we, we put on the taxes, so. But this year it seems a little more than normal. I apologize. I, you know, I, I just saw one today that hadn't seen in a while. But, you know, I always make a note, I'm, I'm, I'm the number one person to fill those cards out. So, Gordon can tell you that, so. And if you have any questions, if anybody has any questions about property or front yard, backyard, you can call up here. It can be anonymous, you don't have to give your name. And we'll, we'll write it up and then send it out to Gordon and he will be out. Feel free to call us. We're happy to hear from it, from you.
I do have a question.
Okay.
The tree cleanup.
Yes.
I know there's some people who are not financially able to hire somebody. Is there any way they can get help to?
We, we don't really, we, by our ordinance, the homeowner is responsible.
Correct. I'm just saying, is there, would Jeff or you know of any?
I don't know of any financial assistance for that, yeah.
Kevin?
If I could right now, we had spoke about that last week and that was looked at a couple of years ago. I would like to refer that back to committee so that we can look at that. At what time we looked at having the city irresponsible for the trees and tree lawn rather than the homeowners. And for some reason, that never came to fruition. I would like to refer that to, that go to service. I'd like to refer that to service for further discussion.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
So moved.
All right, then we'll have that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Just referring to the tree cleanup stuff?
Tree lawn.
Tree lawn, tree.
Tree lawn responsibilities.
Okay.
To service. Okay, you know, I would just want to, if you know of anything, I know some people that probably can't afford to hire.
Well, that was one of the reasons I presented this several years ago.
Sure.
Because we knew something like this was gonna happen and, and the trees were gonna sit there.
Okay.
And we've got some instances like that.
One thing they could potentially do is put a sign out that says, "Free wood, come take it." Because, in seriousness, I talked to a resident over on Rogers Street that did just that. And there's, there's guys out there that want the free firewood and they'll come and cut it up just for the fun of cutting it up and then take the wood with them, so put a sign out letting somebody know that that might be your first step and you might get real lucky with that.
Facebook.
Facebook.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Law Director. Mr. Mott.
No report.
No report. Okay, Auditor.
Nothing from the auditor, the treasurer, the police chief, or the mayor.
All right. All right, with that, do I have a motion to accept city officers' report?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion pass. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, visitors regarding reports of standing and special committees and of city officers. Okay. Okay. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Okay. Proposed Resolution Number 225-2022, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Busiris, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the 2022 Busiris fireworks festival according to the schedule set forth herein. Further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance Number 24-2022, amending and supplementing Chapter 1333 entitled Stormwater Regulations under Title V, Stormwater Management, under Part 13 entitled Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Busiris and Declaring an Emergency. Proposed Ordinance Number 25-2022, amending and supplementing Section 925.03 entitled Rates under Chapter 925 entitled Sewer Service Charges under Title V entitled Sewers under Part 9 entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordnance, excuse me, Codified Ordinances of the City of Busiris and Declaring an Emergency. And Proposed Ordinance Number 26-2022, amending the Traffic Control Map and File established by Ordinance 2778 in Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Busiris, Ohio, and adding additional signage, all as detailed herein. That is it for the first reading.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept this as the first reading?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Steve.
Steve, okay.
All right. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Okay. No one. All right. Proposed consideration, consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed Resolution Number 222-2022, resolution approving participation in Region 17 Governance Structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this as the final reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the final time. All right. No one. All right. Refer back to the originating committee. Proposed Resolution 225-2022, referred back to health and safety. Proposed Ordinance 24-2022, refer back to service. Proposed Ordinance 25-2022, referred back to service. Proposed Ordinance 26-2022, referred back to service. And Proposed Resolution 222-2022, referred back to finance.
For the board, I'm sorry. You were gonna say the same thing.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Proposed Ordinance 26-2022 should be referred back to health and safety, not service.
Oh, that's, that's correct. Health and safety. Okay. Okay. Committee report on pending legislation. Health and safety.
Health and safety is favorable of Proposed Resolution 225-2022 for our special street closures and health and safety is favorable of Proposed Ordinance 26-2022 reports and updates to the traffic control map.
Okay, service.
Service is favorable of both Proposed Ordinance 24-2022 Stormwater Ordinance, Jack 1338 amendment, and also favorable of Proposed Ordinance 25-2022 Sewer Rates.
Okay. And finance.
Finance is favorable to Proposed Resolution 222-2022, the Appointing of Region 17 Representatives.
All right.
Okay, cut it off though. Further consideration.
Okay, for further consideration of pending legislation. Ordinance 24-2022, the Stormwater Ordinance, Chapter 1, 3, 3, 3. I need a motion to, how do I get this?
Suspend the rules?
For the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance 24-2022, Stormwater Ordinance, Chapter 1333. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Who has a second?
Steve.
Steve, okay. All righty, Myers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick is absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance Number 24-2022?
So moved.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Uh, Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
I skipped Sherick. Sherick is absent.
Okay. Ordinance Number 20.
According to the ordinance, it says we need two-thirds of a vote for anything on emergency, correct? Do we have two-thirds here?
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just sitting over there.
He's still, he's still just voting.
I, I voted.
I didn't know if he could still vote not being on there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure.
That's fine. Okay. Ordinance Number 24-2022 is duly adopted. Okay. For the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 25-2022, sewer rates, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Scott, Young, and Dan? Okay. All right, Young?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick's absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Run, he started over again. He did the motion.
What?
Terry did the motion. I didn't.
I, I didn't.
That's all right. Terry did the motion. Just, just change it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's all right. Change, just change the marking on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Ordinance Number 25-2022?
So moved. Sorry.
Okay.
Alright, Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
And Cherrick is absent.
Alright, Ordinance Number 25-2022 is duly adopted. Okay, for the second and third readings of proposed Ordinance Resolution 225-2022, the Bratwurst Festival, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Potter?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Cherrick is absent, Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Ordinance Number 220, Resolution Number
So moved.
Second.
Who was the first, I'm sorry?
Terry.
Terry, okay. Alright, Spiegel?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Cherrick is absent, Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Okay. Proposed Resolution 225-2022 is duly adopted. Okay, for the second and third readings...
This is actually not an emergency, this one's regular.
Oh.
Yeah, this one just has to be adopted.
That, that's right. For the final reading of Resolution 222-2022, the appointing of Regional 17 Representative, do I have a motion?
To adopt?
To adopt.
So moved. Second.
Was that Wireball?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Cherrick is absent, Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any?
Quiet, order.
Yes.
Would you like to announce that's been adopted?
Oh, first time of doing this, so yes.
Let's try and help, sir.
Thank you. Resolution Number 222-2022 has been duly adopted. Okay, old and unfinished business. Anybody have any to bring up, to refer? If not, new and miscellaneous business.
I would like to make another referral, I was asked to refer for discussion, public safety compensation to finance.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed, okay, for finance.
I just had something I wanted to bring up as well.
Go ahead.
What do we need to do to modify the codified ordinance to allow the DORA boundaries to include Shrine's Art Park and Picking Park?
If I, if I... Mr. Modder, have you had a chance to review that, there was an email sent earlier today, I don't know if it made it to you.
I didn't see it, yeah, I could, I could speak to that.
Yeah.
There is nothing that prohibits alcohol in those parks, the only part that does would be Harman, and all Miller has a deed restriction in Lyons, so...
So I think we're okay, just leave it be.
Yeah, we're, we're alright. Actually, no, that's not correct.
I didn't think...
Hold on, hold on a second.
Zoning, zoning.
It was sent out by Kelly earlier. Yeah, it seemed confused, I read, and it seemed that we were waiting on a legal opinion of yes or no, if it needed to be amended. I think we're fixing to find out. Says it's a Law Director question and a council decision.
So, at, at the conclusion of business today, Kelly Patterson did find in the codified ordinance where it does state that alcohol is prohibited in all city parks, we were under the impression that it was a deed restriction prior to that, but Kelly did find that, so what council will probably have to do is include Shines Art Park and Picking Park into the list of parks that we have, and then maybe add language that says alcohol is prohibited except for those parks within the boundaries of the DORA, and then that would, that would suffice to allow alcohol in those, in those parks, so, that'll be something that you'll have to assign to one of the committees to look at.
Yeah, I'd like to refer that to health and safety.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed, so...
And then, Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we then, could I ask if there are two other council members that would join me in requesting a special council meeting at the conclusion of the committee meetings on Thursday, so if committee does decide to do this, we can address that to adhere to the timeline of the July 1st start of the DORA.
If you want to include the public, for the public hearing, we have a motion on that too.
I'll amend my motion to also include, so for the special council meeting, the two topics potentially would be the, the...
For public land.
For health and safety.
Plating.
To talk about the inclusion of the city parks within the DORA bounds, and then for the public hearing for 1050 South Sandusky, to go for a public hearing through plating.
And the other issue that we didn't get passed, you gotta get legislation passed.
Which was?
For the public hearing, we were supposed to schedule August 1st for the...
The business, downtown business district and the apartment residential district.
Okay, yeah, I would like to include all three of those as topics for the special council meeting at the conclusion of committee meetings on Thursday, I need two other council members to concur.
Before we, maybe we should, is that something you or your, or the clerk can do in two days?
I don't see it a problem between legislation that quickly, as long as it's, as long as a written request is submitted to, to the proper office, I don't see that as a problem.
Is that something you think you can get them?
Okay.
Megan?
I'm sorry.
Is that something you think you can get them?
That'll fall, that falls on us as committee chairs.
Okay.
Hear that, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, get that, get that to him so he can, or them or whoever.
Okay, I need four, four of us, I will be one.
We need three council members, I'm one.
I'll be one.
We got it. So... We'll get, I'll get with you.
We'll have...
Okay, 'cause I know that.
Fourth name for you on that one. So we will have a special city council meeting following our committee meetings Thursday, only on those specific subjects. Okay, referrals, have the other referrals.
Um, I pretty much just wrote them all down, so, the planning commission, plating, which was just referred, I just put planning commission in the letter that we received.
Correct.
Um, the tree lawn to service, so planning commission to plating, tree slash lawn to service, public safety is what you had, so I think that's what it is, to finance, and then I just put DORA to health and safety, I don't know if we put DORA amendment.
Right, and the plating for the downtown business and residential apartment, and South Sandusky also.
Hey, excuse me, if I could, Mayor brings up a valid point, let's go ahead and refer the DORA alcohol consumption privileges to, not only to health and safety, but also public lands, I think it probably does, but we do go to both, it's a city-owned park.
True.
Good catch. That way we're covered.
That's the first thing in years.
That, that, thank you.
First thing you've been right on.
So we got that going, so...
First thing you catch up.
Yeah.
Public lands also.
So health and safety and public lands.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, alright, do I have a motion to excuse Jenny Vermillion and Ciara and Cherrick?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Do I have a motion to adjourn, if there's nothing else?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.